Jimmy, ready?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Aziz Essam.
Norma Drummond.
Mary Semenera.
Thank you. Can I ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which Satan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we do have a couple changes to our agenda, namely, there are four applications that we are not going to be acting on this evening. So, there's no action tonight on item number one, number seven, number nine, and number 11. All right, so those four, no action this evening. So, we do have, we do have a set of minutes to approve, and we have to have a discussion about our April meeting. So, why don't we start with approving the minutes from our January 28 meeting? Do we have a motion to approve those as amended? They were really good minutes. There's, I think I made like two changes to them.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. So, let's take care of that. So, the second thing is our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 24th. We will be back in town hall. But our April meeting, as I discussed at the January meeting, April 28th is the New York's primary day for the presidential elections. And apparently, all of the public rooms are going to be busy that day, or all going to be conducting elections, including the fire district headquarters here at town hall. So, we have to change our meeting date or cancel the meeting. So, our first option is to move it to Monday, the 27th.
What about the old town hall?
The old town hall?
The one next to the police station.
The old library thing?
No, that was the...
The, the old schoolhouse?
Yeah, 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 that's, well, next to the police station.
The little room?
Yeah, the little room.
Where the veterans meet.
Correct, correct. Isn't that available?
I asked Gina, and she said, she looked around, and everything was being used as planned, but I don't know.
Oh, even that old schoolhouse?
I don't know that one.
Okay.
Specifically, that one didn't come up.
I don't have a problem.
I have no, I have no objection to moving it to Monday.
Yeah.
I may be a little late, but I could be there.
Okay. Well, between the three of us, we would actually have a quorum, so, all right.
Just make sure that my assistant notifies me.
All right, so I, because we did take a vote to adopt a schedule, I actually do need a motion to amend our schedule to move the April meeting to Monday, April 27th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the month, so the April meeting is officially April 27th to be held at town hall, because Pam did check on the availability of that room. Okay, so the way our meeting runs, the first section of our meeting is decisions. There are actually two decisions, but one is not actually ready for us to issue anything. That one is already on the agenda, listed as a May decision date. But we do have one decision that we are prepared to issue this evening. And then, we have a number of public hearings, which are applications that this board has already had an opportunity to review. And then, we're just want to hear from the neighbors if there are any concerns that we should be aware of. And then, lastly, our reviews, and those are applications that generally, this board has not seen before, although there are a couple on here that we have seen. We do, by the way, have one refund, because since after our last meeting, one of the applicants actually withdrew his application, based on the discussion that we had. So, so with that, I want to just jump right into our agenda, and let's get going. So, our fight, first item is item number two, Appeal 3937 Rockwell, William Rockwell, 228 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow our proposed generator to be placed in front of his house pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. Do I have somebody who wishes to offer the resolution?
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. In reference to Appeal 3 number 37 by William Rockwell, project is variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations to allow a proposed emergency generator to be placed in the front yard of the property located at 228 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction. And the resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied for a variance to allow an emergency generator to be placed in the front yard of the house, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on January 28th, 2020, whereas the applicant has stated that the generator will only be used when his home loses electricity, and whereas the applicant has a fence that encroaches on town at East Fishkill, town-owned property, and whereas the applicant has requested a variance to allow an eight-foot high fence, but he withdrew his request after the ZBA discussed this during the public hearing. Whereas this action is a type-two action under secret, and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutch News on January 15th, 2020, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the applicant has agreed to provide adequate screening. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, but this is the most efficient location to place the generator, since it is near the existing propane tank. The variance request is not substantial, and the proposed area of variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by William Rockwell, 228 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, for a variance to allow the proposed emergency generator to be in the front yard of the property, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant places the generator in the general location provided on his application and screens it with shrubbery and either a decorative fence not greater than four feet in height or stone horseshoe. Two, the applicant removes or relocates the existing fence that currently encroaches upon town-owned property onto his own property. And three, the applicant obtains all necessary building permits. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries, okay? You'll deal with the building permit now, with the building department. Yep. Okay, so now, we're up to our first public hearing. This is item number three, Appeal 3933, Petrillo, Bruce Petrillo, 39 Queen Anne Lane, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing 20, 12-foot by 20-foot garage addition pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is Mr. Petrillo here? Please? Okay, so we did, we've had an opportunity to review your application. In essence, you did get a variance to a, to do a garage addition, to do a garage, and then, you actually built an additional addition on top of that.
Sure.
But it's the same color, it's, it's actually tucked in behind the existing garage, so it's not visible from the road. But at this point, you're looking to just clean up all the issues on your property.
Yes.
So, that's why it came to our attention, that we needed this action. So, it's been there for many years, it's, it suits the house. I think we actually got, yeah, we did actually get some letters from some of your neighbors.
Okay.
All right, so are there any, before I read these into the records, are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
None by me.
No. Okay, so, we did get two letters. The first is dated February 9th, to the East Fishkill Zoning Board of Appeals. We live next door to the Petrillos and have discussed the appeal number 3933 for the five-foot variance for an existing 12-foot by 20-foot garage extension with Bruce Petrillo, and do not have any concerns with the pre-built extension. And this is signed by April and Andrew Simko. And then, this must be your other side neighbor, dated February 9th, to the East Fishkill Zoning Board of Appeals. We live next door to the Petrillos and have discussed the appeal 3933 for a five-foot variance for an existing 12-foot by 20-foot garage extension with Bruce Petrillo, and do not have any concerns with the pre-built extension. And this is signed by Diana and John Emery.
Correct.
Okay, so, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Bruce Petrillo, 39 Queen Anne Lane, Wappingers Falls, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 20-foot garage addition? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure. This is Appeal number 3933 for Bruce Petrillo, for a five-foot sideline variance for an existing 12-foot by 20-foot garage addition pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance located at 39 Queen Anne Lane in Wappingers Falls. Resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Semenera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the structure already exists and it matches the existing garage and home design and colors. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the addition is attached to the existing garage, which was granted a 10-foot sideline variance in 2002. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area of variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance, and the applicant may now proceed to the building department and, and apply for a building permit. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. Should go to the building department, correct? Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right, item number four, Appeal 3941, Wang, Jing Wang, Fourth Thistle Lane, is requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Is Ms. Wang or her professional? Okay. Okay, so, we did have an opportunity to discuss this at the last meeting. Actually, we've looked at it as two meetings now, and there, the, some things came up that we were concerned about not having a survey. And so, thank you for getting us this survey, so, we just want to be sure that we're good with all of the other structures that we were talking about. And, you know, again, for the purpose of the public hearing, we are talking about a house that's on a corner lot, so in, in essence, it's got two front yards. So, we have to worry about making sure that any structures or anything are, that are more than 50 feet away from either of those streets. And so, you're proposing that this whole backyard setup that you're, that you're building, which looks beautiful, is tucked to the farthest away, end of the back of your property from both sides. And so, you're putting a pool in, you've put a patio in around it, and now, you're looking to put the, the hot tub in as well, so. So, we just needed to be sure that where you've got everything, see, the pool equipment is on a, looks like it's going to be on a concrete pad or something that's 25 feet away, so that's fine. You're 100, more than 100 feet away from your backyard. Your pool itself is 25 feet away, so we're good with that. Your, the patio is... Actually...
17 feet.
Okay, but this looks like somebody just drew on measurements, as opposed to...
Did you get the new ones?
Oh. The one I have has...
Just came in.
It says January 31st, 2020.
Oh, there's a new one.
Yeah, a new one, February...
This is February 12th.
Hold on.
Yeah.
There's three versions.
There are three versions. Look at this. I got one, two, three.
Yeah, the third, that version.
February 12th.
February 12th?
Yep.
Thank you. Let's put this one away. Because one looks like it was just drawn in, as opposed to actually being the official.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the pool itself is 25 feet away, but the hot tub is, and the patio is around...
So, the question is, is the, how far away is the patio that's around this hot tub?
Which is the question.
We don't have a measurement for that.
And I guess that's, begs the question. You say pool and retaining wall are still under construction. Is there a patio that's going between the structures and the retaining wall?
Yeah, there's a patio going between the pool and the retaining wall, so the edge...
Same thing, where you walk down from the height at the hot tub, you have some steps coming down.
Right.
And it seems there's another retaining wall there. When you walk down, are you going on to another patio, lower patio?
Yeah, the one that's connected to the pool, correct.
So, that's...
So, the stairs and the patio are all within...
Well, it has to be 10 feet away, right? That's an issue.
Oh, 15 feet for a patio.
Yeah.
It's 15 for a patio.
We're beyond that.
So, the stairs are not wider than two feet?
Uh, they're, I think they're four feet.
And then, the patio can't go beyond the stairs? When you get to the bottom of the stairs, you can't, you're, you need a variance for the patio now.
Yeah, the question is, do you need that patio that's on that lower level? I don't know what that patio...
Yeah, I guess the question would be, can you move the stairs back into...
Where the hot tub is.
But, well, not necessarily where the hot tub is, but move it back into the patio and the retaining wall, actually build the stairs into the patio up that's up top.
Next to the hot tub, basically.
If we got to, you're, you're, you're in need of more variances, based on what you're showing here. Because patios...
Well, the pool, the pool's 25 feet away, right? And the hot tub is 17, so that retaining wall that is right around the hot tub is 16 feet. So, the edge of, what you see behind that retaining wall is all vegetation.
Where do you, I don't see a 16-foot measurement.
Because they're going to foot...
Seventeen foot.
I see 17 feet.
Right, so the hot tub is one foot off the wall.
Again, it says 17 feet.
The wall is 16 feet off the property line. So, the patio is below that, between the pool...
Okay.
And the wall. So, the patio is technically 16 feet from the property line.
So, the patio ends there, at the retaining?
At the wall, correct.
That's what I'm asking.
What, what's, what are we seeing?
What's the stairs going down to?
What's the L shape? Yeah, what's the stairs going down to, then?
That's just an upper tier.
Look at...
So, that's a dap?
Above the hot tub?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an upper, upper tier.
So, it's a, it's a retaining wall, it's another patio.
Yeah, we had a retain this...
It's another patio.
Yeah, a small patio, correct.
It's within 15 feet of the property line, right?
Can I, why don't you come over here, let me explain to you what I'm seeing up here, okay? I'm seeing this pool and retaining wall under construction, no problem. What you're telling me is there's a patio around here, okay?
Correct.
Then there are stairs.
To go up.
Up or down, okay? And then, you have another, some structure here.
Yeah, that was going to be a patio, correct.
Okay, that's what's...
But, but, in essence, you're now saying that this is now going up. How tall is this retaining wall going to be?
This is about three feet, and that's about three feet.
So, three feet above ground level, or three plus three?
So, because the ground itself is going up?
The ground, first wall's three feet, flat, second wall's three feet. So, it's within...
Okay, but if you're at 16 feet at this line...
Right, it seems to be that this is...
You can go one more foot.
Yeah.
So, you can't go, you can't build that...
That patio is approaching, that, that lower patio, this L-shaped patio.
It's an upper patio.
That's an upper patio.
Or upper patio.
So, that's closer to the line. Correct.
So, how close is it, though? We don't have a measurement here to know. So, you're saying things that's...
This one's higher than the pool?
Yeah.
But again, so you have a problem.
Right, so that, right.
This patio has to be at least 15 feet away from the property line.
So, all we have to do is...
Okay, I think we also have another problem, because it, it was, it has eight-feet sideline variance for the proposed hot tub. So, the measurement, that 17 feet, is going to the hot tub, and then, you have another foot or so...
But again, the patio only has to be 15 feet away.
Yeah, but that's fine, because 17 and eight is 25.
Correct, but again, that's to the hot tub, but then, you have the patio around...
That has to be 15 feet away.
Fifteen, patio is 15 feet. That's what you're getting at right now.
So, you don't need a variance for the, for this one. With that slower, or, I don't know. Question is, do you really need to put this one in? Or, can you do something different? I guess you have a kitchen already built in. Is that built already?
Yeah, that's off. It's a very small patio.
Well, that's still within the setback requirements.
Yeah, it's within the setback.
So, we have to open up our variance on that, or...
Yes. If you want to...
But I don't have measurements. I don't know how, why, if the stairs are four feet, is it another four feet, then, to the...
Yeah, that wall, the second wall is 10 feet off.
Probably a little bit over four feet, right?
That wall is, how many?
10 feet off one. The upper.
So, then, the, so this is going to be four feet, so this is only three feet, then, at the bottom, the landing area for it.
Probably closer to...
So, that's 10 feet off that wall.
Okay, so, because if you said that this is 16 feet away, so it's six, and so it's, wait, no, it's, so then, it's four and two.
Yeah, it's a very small, correct.
Well, it looks more than, it looks like...
More than two, but...
It more, looks more than two feet from the figure as measured, I mean, it's more like three, minimum three feet, maybe.
Okay, well, this wasn't noticed to your neighbor, first off. And we're talking about, you're, if you're 10 feet away, you're a third of the, you know, 33 percent variance. All right, is there anything else that we have to worry about here?
I mean, is the idea that's more patio, that you're at the same level as the top of the hot tub?
Yeah, it's basically the same level as the top of the hot tub, correct.
There's a fire pit called out for it, I don't know if we have any...
Yeah.
That's what's going on, this little patio, it looks like.
Oh, so there's a structure on there, on top of the patio. The structure needs to be 25 feet away, though.
Maybe we can eliminate that, that's...
So, that's, the fire pit has to be closer to the kitchen.
What are you, do you have a fire pit on you?
Yeah, it's on the fire pit.
It's on the handwritten, it's on the handwritten one.
From the January 31st version.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a movable fireplace, a permanent structure. And again, it does not show up on this new, the third version.
Put the patio there and put one of those movable fire pits on it, sit around, that's fine.
Correct.
Bovable in, depends how big it is. Somebody put one on it, put a cover on it, it was too heavy to move the cover.
Well, behind that property line, it's all woods, and it goes up.
Wang?
So, as far as visual goes.
Okay, why don't you just go back, because I think we have an understanding. Thank you.
Okay, but it is somebody's property, so...
I get it, yeah. But the question is, again, a variance is required, so...
Right.
And the problem is, we can't grant one variance when you still have an outstanding issue. So, we got to take care of it all at once, and that's why we're going through this again. I mean, without that, we were prepared to make a decision, now we have to consider that.
All right, let's have Michael weigh in. We, we did not advertise for a patio, so...
Correct. I, I take the position more that every, as long as they notice the neighbors like they should have, everyone's on constructive notice that they were asking for variances.
Okay.
So, I don't personally have an issue with the notice. If, if the board, if the board, in their discretion, decides that they want to re-notice this and re-advertise, I mean, it's within your purview, but I personally don't have a legal issue.
Okay, so, at this point, recognizing that you do have an issue that that patio can't be there with a variance, what's the request at this point? It's not up to us to tell you what to do. We need you to tell us, what are you looking for?
Well, we came for the hot tub variance, obviously, so would that be granted? The upper patio, we'd like an allowance for it, if it could go in, but if it needs a variance, and I guess we'll have to apply for a variance and go through both of them again.
Well, that's what we're saying. What we're saying is, we can deal with it right now, but we need, I guess, we...
Suppose...
Need to understand what your options are, and, and why, does it have to be as big as you're proposing, that sort of thing? Is there any ability to shift it a little bit?
Before you say anything, let me say something. If you took those stairs, instead of coming down and had a landing space down, what if you had the landing on top? The stairs came down, so you had four feet off your 16 feet. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And you're going, I guess, actually up. So, now, you're at the level of the hot tub, and you just have, instead of eight feet for that space, you end up with a maximum of four feet?
Mm-hmm.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got you.
Now, I wouldn't have as much of an issue, because then, we're only talking a couple feet into the...
Or the direction, if they change the direction of the stairs?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they, and even if they tuck them into the...
Well, they're not going to have...
It's a state patio. It's, it's under construction, it's not built now. So, they do have the opportunity to change.
Normal. I believe it's already built.
Oh, are these stairs built?
Yeah, but I can, I can switch them, it's nothing.
So, if, if we cut it back, so you're only going 12 feet, I don't have a problem with going forward, that's not significant.
Okay, again, issue, but what about the, but what about the fire pit?
The fire pit, if it's...
It's natural.
It needs 25.
It's not gas, it's natural burn.
Yeah, but it, that needs a 25, that's not...
Yeah, he said he was going to remove that, so I don't know why you bring it up.
Oh, okay. If you're moving it, fine.
Do we need to, do we need an exact measurement?
Do you want me to show you what I'm talking about? Or you got it?
Do we need to know this dimension?
So, if you had a, the landing that came out, and the stairs just went up alongside, and then, this whole thing was the height that you needed?
No, we have, because what he says is, this is, oh, there's a matter of 17 feet.
So, we can give you, they're 16 feet off, that's correct. We give you a four-foot variance, so you're at least 12 feet away, then I don't have a problem with that, okay? So, you do three or four feet wide on the steps, that's a wide step, okay?
All right. Anything else that we see on there? I didn't see anything else, so.
Let me just.
But we kinda have to look at both.
I don't have a pen.
We kinda have to look at both.
Is this an additional fence, this red fence? So is there another fence that's going here, around the pool and patio area? It's listed on, on here.
Yeah, it's on there, should be in red.
Yeah.
But again, it's not shown on the survey that you gave us.
Right.
It's just shown on, hand drawn on.
Right, because he didn't, we didn't know exactly, you know, where it was going to go at that point, 'cause of the structures and all that, so, but that's the general area where it's gonna be.
And what's the height of that fence?
Fifty-four inches.
So it's more than four feet, so it's gonna be at least two feet in, from the property line?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm not presuming anything, I'm, 'cause there's no measurements on here, so we've gotta be sure. So Rocco, we got a new survey for the weighing application, and it's showing that they've got a patio that is within the setback requirement, so what we're talking about is trying to reduce that a little bit, but that variance was not noticed, but Michael, our attorney, has opined that the neighbors were on notice that the applicant was seeking a variance, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
I'm fine.
You're gonna be prepared to read the.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jing Wang for Thistle Lane, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub, N A.
With further consideration of a four-foot variance for a patio around the hot tub.
Sideline variance?
Yep.
Okay, so anybody here wishing to speak on either of those issues?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the number, the second submission you had, you had a proposed shed of twenty feet by ten feet, is that still going on, or has it been taken off?
No, yeah, it's proposed, it's, we haven't done anything with it yet, but we submitted the application, we just have to get a picture of the shed for the building department, and how it's being constructed.
And does that. Okay, is that?
Well, it's on the original drawing.
Okay, yeah, so, does that need a variance also, or?
No. It's the same distance as the pool, right off the line.
The shed only needs fifteen feet now.
Okay. Okay, I was just looking at, yeah, okay, fine, I'm okay.
So there's nobody wishing to speak regarding this application, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second, on favor?
So, in reference to appeal three-nine-four-one by the applicant Jing Wang, project being an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub, and together with a further consideration of a four-foot sideline variance for a patio around the said hot tub pursuant to section one-ninety-four-nine-five of the zoning ordinance, located at Four Thistle Lane, Hopewell Junction, with the resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is a quarter lot with road frontage on Thistle Lane and Logan's Way, and the rear yard, which offers the most privacy, has limited space, the variances requested are not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variances, and the applicant may now proceed to the building department and apply for the building permits, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Your second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you are all set, now you'll deal with the building department. All right, thank you for your patience on that one. Can you please pass that to Pam, I think I got all of Jim's.
I got, I wrote it out.
Oh, Jim wrote it out.
I wrote it out, too.
Between the three drafts, you should get the corrected version. All right, item number five, appeal three-nine-four-three, Hamel, Renee Hamel, One Trails End, Wildflower Hills, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a nine-foot rear line variance to expand her existing deck from eight foot by twelve foot to twelve foot by twelve pursuant to section one-ninety-four-nine-four of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, good evening. All right, so we had the opportunity to review your application, you have the end unit, and the building, and, you know, within the complex there, you already have spoken with your homeowners association, and they've said as long as we've granted the variance, that they're okay with it, you have nothing behind you, there's open space behind you, and it's really, you're asking for a four-foot addition to your depth, so eight foot by twelve foot to twelve foot by twelve foot gives you a lot more room, actually, to be able to make it a much more functional deck back there, so it's gonna be within the keeping of the character of your buildings there, certainly not out of character, so, any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
I'm good.
So anyone who, here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Renee Hamel, One Trails End, Wildflower Hills, requesting a nine-foot rear line variance to expand the, her existing deck from eight foot by twelve foot to twelve foot by twelve foot? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And?
Rocco?
Sure. Appeal number three-nine-four-three, applicant Renee Hamel, nine-foot rear line variance to expand deck from eight by twelve to twelve by twelve pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash ninety-four of the zoning ordinance, so located at One Trails End, Hopewell Junction, zoning district R one-three, resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Lametone, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, and the proposed plan was approved by the homeowners' association on July twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as these are small lots located in the townhouse community, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, now therefore be it resolved that zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance, and the applicant may now proceed to the building department and apply for building permit, be it further resolved that within five business days of this adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, you are all set.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, appeal three-nine-four-four, Turner, Paul Turner, Seventy-sixth Brown Road, Wapinders Falls, requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot bench, which was installed in nineteen fifty-nine, and replaced in two thousand and six, and is located partially in front of the front line of the house pursuant to section one-ninety-four-nine-eight of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. All right, so we had an opportunity to review your application last time around, but some questions actually have come up, so, based on site visits and other things over there, so, so you have a series of a couple fences that are, like, in very close proximity to each other, and that's, which, you know, it's on your property, it's, I'm not necessarily questioning why the need for the second fence, it's a very nice-looking fence, it certainly is.
The second fence is the neighbor's.
Right, no, no, and that's what, I'm, let me finish, let me get to that, so I recognize it's not, they're not, actually not both your fences, one is to demarcate where your property is, and your access back to the facility in the back, okay, your access in the back. Go ahead.
The white fence has been there since day one. The, the white fence is about seven feet from my property line, so the, the second fence is actually mine, the one that goes across there, when the house was vacant and deserted and foreclosed on, I decided to take that property with the four-foot fence, which I didn't need a permit for, so I, I just put that up, and I use that to store my garbage cans, and keep my things in there, the person on the other side, they're using my property, about seven feet of it, so, you know, I'm not gonna take it from them, because they're, they're there, if they were to, if they were to vacate the house and, and, you know, foreclose or whatever, then maybe I would take that back as well, but.
You wanna be careful, though, about allowing of somebody else's use of your property, okay?
Yeah, I know, I've heard.
Adverse possession.
Exactly, you don't want them to claim at some later date that you knowingly let them use that property, and.
Especially if you say, well, I think you're allowing them to.
Right.
Well, I mean.
I know, you're being a good neighbor.
Yeah, you know.
You may wanna.
Yeah, I, well.
Protect yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, but the question came up about exactly how many structures there are on your property, how many garages, or sheds, or other structures are there?
There's two garages, I mean, there's a garage and a shed, and then, I'm sorry, and then there's the, I have two of those cloth, they're portable things, that are not permanent.
Right, okay, so you've got, so, and, so the garage itself is detached, 'cause it's way in the back there?
It's detached, and it's got a permit and a C O.
Right, and then.
And the shed has a C O.
Okay, so the other two structures are what we have a problem with, because.
I thought you didn't need a, if they get moved every, if they're not there for more than six months, I thought they did not have to have a permit.
But you're only allowed one accessory structure on your property, that's the problem.
You're not allowed to have those cloth ones, the vinyl ones?
You're not allowed canvas structures at all, so, that really is what's, what's becoming part of the issue here. Yes, can we allow a temporary structure? It can be allowed, but you already have a shred, a shred, oh my God, you already have a shed, so you already have a, a secondary structure there, so, that's why we're running into an issue about how many structures you have there. So, and then the question came up about whether, is the building department gonna need a survey for where all of the, where each of these structures are? No, we're okay on that?
I gave you a survey.
Let me look.
A stamped survey.
No, we didn't get, I didn't get it.
Pretty sure that, I handed in ten copies.
Yeah, it's not part of our package here.
I don't have it.
Well, I have one here.
Okay, so the issue really is more the canvas structures, and so how long have they been up already?
Couple weeks, a month, I don't know, I didn't really date it when they went up, I could take them down tomorrow.
Yeah, well, that's the question, what are you doing with them?
Yeah.
Why are they up?
Rick, I can't hear you.
Temporary structure, the definition requires permission from the town engineer if it's there for more than one month.
Okay.
And it has to be removed under six.
So, did you hear what the building inspector said, so, the definition of temporary includes the fact that it has to be approved by the town engineer, if it's gonna be up for more than one month, and the town engineer can then give permission for it to be up for the six months? But again, he's only allowed by code, one, one additional structure, 'cause he's already got a detached garage, and he's got a shed, so the code only allows for one additional structure.
Okay.
So, one's gonna come down?
Whatever, whatever you.
And then you'll pursue a permit for the other, for the temporary?
Yeah, whatever you make me do, I'll do.
Well, that's what the law says, so you're gonna comply with the law, or not make it.
Yeah, we're not.
We don't say we're direct, you do something.
You know what I mean, it's, I have, I have a, a very large motorcycle collection, and I have my motorcycles in there, you know, to keep them out of the weather, so if we would rather see thirty motorcycles on my lawn and argue about that, I mean, I'll, I'll take it all the way, I don't know, whatever you make me do is what I'm gonna do.
See, that's not the issue, sir.
You know, I mean, it's, I'm protecting my stuff, and I'm, I'm back in the woods, there's nobody there, I mean, I don't know, you know? If you didn't have that thing coming down from the sky, no one would even know it was there.
Well, that's not the issue. Fortunately or unfortunately, whatever your personal opinion may be at the time.
Jimmy, you need to move closer to the.
I'm sorry, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your point of view at the time, there are rules and regulations and laws for the people living in the town, hopefully for the benefit of everybody in the town.
Well, I've lived in this town for fifty years, and I'm not saying I'm not gonna do it, if you say take them down, then I gotta take them down.
We're telling you what the law is, so you're gonna be in violation of the law, or you are in violation of the law.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't wanna get this to be antagonistic, so, what we're asking you is whether you're gonna confirm that one will come down immediately, and you'll speak to the building department about the second one, and see if you can keep it up for those additional months, they're gonna come out, they're gonna look at it, because there's valid concerns on a temporary structure, if there's a high wind or something, we don't want all those flying into your neighbor's yard, in another house, or going out in the road, or any of that stuff, that's why the rules are there, so.
I completely understand.
You're not gonna punish anybody, you can certainly come in and, and look to see what you need, and see whether you can put an addition on your garage or something, speak to the building department when you're, when they're out there.
The building department's already been there, and said everything is okay.
For what you've built, that's fine, but if you need to store your other equipment, maybe there's other ways to address it.
It's not equipment, it's, it's a motorcycle collection.
Well, that's equipment, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna get into semantics, sir, trying to, to give you some advice on how the situation can be dealt with, and we'd appreciate that you deal with it.
What's the date of the inspection report that you have?
Excuse me?
What's the date of the inspection report that you are pointing to?
You have a copy of it in there, and the date is five-eight-eighteen.
Okay, I have a report from January thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
You're, you're, you have this one.
That's for your C O.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And there's no problem with the C O, that's not what we're talking about. Isn't that what that's for?
No, this says, fence installed twelve to fourteen years ago, several inspectors have seen these fences, observed property mark out, and is more than two feet from lines, okay for permit, but may need variance, interpretation may not need be given of front yard, as fence is in front of house's front line, pre-existing non-conforming, but not in front of the house.
That's not what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about your sheds.
The temporary structures.
Well, the, the whole reason I'm here, is 'cause Max, the building inspector, was doing an inspection down the road, and decided that he was gonna look at all the neighbors' properties, and he's the one who reported me for this fence that's been there for fourteen years. So the building department is the one that came and checked everything that was not supposed to be there, and that's why I'm here for the fence.
Correct.
According to the building department at the time, everything else was okay.
Well, that was obvious to him, I don't know whether Max went in the property and saw these temporary structures, but you're telling us that the structures have only been there for a matter of a couple weeks, so, please don't contradict yourself, either they've been there for a long time, which means it predates your application here, or they weren't there, so, decide which one is that story that you're giving to us.
And they weren't there when Max did an inspection in two thousand and eighteen?
Correct.
Or whoever did the inspection.
Max didn't do the inspection.
Whoever did the inspection in two thousand and eighteen, okay, that gave you an all-clear on your property.
Okay, so, what if we just.
Again.
Talk about the fence, and if you give me the variance for the fence based on the fact that those structures will be removed?
That's what we're waiting to hear.
Then I'll remove the structures, I mean, whatever you tell me I need to do, to keep my ten thousand dollar fence that I was told by the building department I didn't have to get a permit to put up, you know, those, those structures are only two thousand dollars apiece, they're not the kind, like, all my neighbors have, that blow away every time the wind blows, these are good structures.
So, again.
But I'll take them down, I, I don't have a problem.
So you have a choice, we've offered you, that you promised, you guarantee you'll take down one.
Well, we condition it.
Yes, condition, and so it's a prom, well, whatever, we want you to acknowledge that you are willing to take down one, if we go forward tonight, and that you'll speak to the building department about the other, if you wanna just acknowledge that you'll take these down immediately, both of them, then we'll give you a decision that addresses it in that way, that you have to take both of them down, that's a condition, other variants.
I'll take them down, because I don't wanna deal with it anymore, I just wanna be able to have my fence, I'll take them down, and.
Okay.
All right, well.
And then we'll.
So, so let us proceed with the review of your application here, all right, so one of the first things I need to do is ask if there are any other questions or comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have the survey, Pam, do we have the survey?
It's a town hall.
Oh, okay, okay, then I'm fine.
Well, we have the inspection, which says they're, they were fine, other than a variance may be required, so, we have that from the building department.
And so, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Paul Turner, Seventy-sixth Brown Road, Wapinders Falls, requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot bench, which was installed in nineteen fifty-nine and replaced in two thousand and six, and is located partially in front of the front line of his house? Seeing none, we're gonna have to close and reserve on this, because we weren't sure what you were gonna do about the structure, so we don't actually have a resolution prepared.
So make a motion to close and resolve.
Second.
Thank you, on favor?
Aye.
So we will actually issue a decision at our next meeting for you, okay?
Could we go out a couple of meetings?
You, you don't actually have to be here for a decision.
I just had surgery yesterday.
You don't have to be here for the decision.
And I'm going away for, I'm going away for a month.
Okay.
So, I'm probably not gonna be able to take these things down tomorrow.
Okay, we're, we're not gonna issue, we, we can issue a decision without you here.
Okay.
All right, so you'll have until next month to, to resolve that.
Okay, and then you, and then the decision will be made, I don't have to be here.
You don't have to be here.
And I just take them down.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, but again, you're saying that you're gonna take it down in sixty days, is that what you're saying?
No, he's, he's saying that when we, we're gonna condition it on our resolution, that they will come down.
There's two cloth units that are gonna come down.
He's not granting him a variance for them, he's not gonna pursue keeping them through, with the town engineer, he'll take them down when we issue the decision.
Okay, in a month from now.
Yeah, I'm gonna take them down, I'm gonna lay them right on my lawn, and they'll see that they're down.
Okay.
And they'll be down.
In a mo, in a month, or, you know, whenever, because. In a month, in a month or, you know, whenever, because it-
As soon as he can practically, given his health and stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, there is no action for number seven. He's actually working with an architect. So, we are up to item number eight, which is Appeal three eight nine five, sorry, three nine two five, William Tell, Dave Tell of William Tell Hardware. Eight twenty-seven Route eighty-two, Hopple Junction, is requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for our proposed building, a seven-foot variance for parking circulation, a nine-and-a-half foot variance for the floor area ratio, a three-foot height variance, and a variance to the parking requirements in order to allow six less parking spaces than required pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash seventeen, one ninety-four dash eighteen, and one ninety-four dash three sixty-one of the zoning ordinance.
Of course, I misplaced that.
Is anybody here for that request? So, this is now, like, the third month that they haven't been here, and there was no email ahead of time, to the best of your knowledge.
Actually, this goes back well before that, right?
Right, but at least for previous meetings, they've actually sent Pam an email saying they were, what they were doing, so-
Yes, at two thirty.
Okay, so, can we directly, um, to send a notice that we really need to see them and find out what they're doing, because-
I would respectfully request, does she do the, I hope so move?
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, there is no action on item number nine. The applicant, again, is working on what her options are. So, we are up to item number ten, which is Appeal three nine three eight, Gabrielli. Donald Gabrielli of Carmel is requesting a variance to build on two undersized vacant lots, which would be combined for a total of one point six nine acres in an R-three zone on a non-town road, Arthur Road, pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one thirty of the zoning ordinance, and a two-eighty-A variance. Good evening.
Aye.
So, we have seen this once before. We've, we've raised some concerns about the fact that multiple requests for variances along this road have been denied, and so, I think you were going to go back and see what your options were.
Right, yeah, we were here last month, we were here the month before.
All right.
Kind of an intro relative to the project. I'm assuming everybody is somewhat familiar with it. We're kind of in a, an area of town where there has been a track history by the zoning board appeals over the last number of years of denying variances relative to construction. Okay? That being said, I can't speak into, as to what the reason was specific to the zoning board decisions in the past relative to denial of those. I just certainly will speak to this project related to its uniqueness in terms of why we are appealing to this board relative to that. We've got some background information. I did some homework relative to the property, how they came about and so forth. So, I guess this may be a recap of some of the items we've already spoke about. This project is up on the three-acre R-three zoning district, so it's a three-acre minimum. This was actually created, these lots, back in nineteen fifty-nine, okay? So, well prior to zoning. This was not created, that I can tell, as part of a filed map, which is pretty standard today. You subdivide from the planning board, create a map, it gets filed. These lots appear to have been created by virtue of deeds, okay? And there is, that goes back to nineteen fifty-nine, referring to Windy Hill Estates Incorporated. Specifically, these deeds were filed back in August twentieth of fifty-nine, and there was declarations of easements and so forth, and that's kind of what created the look of the railway, and individual lots, and so forth. So, obviously prior to zoning. I believe, based upon my review, the town zoning laws came in around seventy-four-
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three? Okay.
Maybe around sixty-three.
All right, still prior to zoning. So, we've got two parcels we're creating, we're combining them into one. We're still undersized in terms of the three-acre size requirement. What, what happens is, the, I only surmise that one of the reasons that there was denials relative to allowing construction of homes on this was, was due to the access, okay? These roads are officially private roads. We are on Arthur Road. There's actually a, another road, which is further up Windy Hill on the left called Joseph Road, okay? And in terms of the road type itself, these are not paved roads. They are basically, I measured it, it's a twelve-foot wide, packed item four service, surface, rather, that has provided access for, at least on Arthur Road, two lots up till now, okay? There are three lots that actually kind of show up on Arthur Road, but one of them has direct access to Windy Hill. So, officially, there's two lots that have current access onto Arthur Road now. This lot was created, was, was, the tax record actually indicates the house was built in nineteen sixty. That makes sense? Thing was created in fifty-nine.
Right.
They built a house. It complements some of the houses, because I kind of did some research relative to the Joseph Road. Apparently, in nineteen sixty, there was a building boom, because there's four houses on there, they were all built around nineteen sixty, and then it all stopped. These parcels, I guess, we talk about the second parcel that gains access off of, off of our road, for whatever reason, and I don't have the information in front of me, and it certainly deserves more discussion and research, was actually constructed in two thousand and five. So, this house, as you come up Arthur Road on the right-hand side, the history is, at some point, and two thousand and five is certainly fifteen years ago, but it's not forty years ago, there was a permit issued for that home to be constructed on that lot, okay? And again, I presume that the reason, one of the reasons for that is because obviously you can get your health department approvals, and getting away from the aspect of the variance and so forth, which we've already performed soil tests out on the lot, so we know that we can get an approval on the lot relative to the soil test that we have. But it was based upon the fact that you could obtain formal access, okay, for emergency vehicles and fire trucks, and what we spoke about the last time together too, was, and I was actually out there earlier today, there's garbage, you know, containers out there, so royal-
Right, so royal carding's going in.
Makes its move and comes out.
Right.
When I think last time, like, when I'm taking some photos, and I think I distributed them to the board, there seemed to be a little bit of washout on the right-hand side in terms of rainwater and so forth, but there's actually a formal ditch. As you chrome up Windy Road coming off of fifty-two, you go up in elevation. So, on the right-hand side, on the high side of Windy Hill, which would be the western side, there is actually a pretty significant roadside ditch that takes water, and then discharges it into a, you know, a stormwater system on Windy Hill and down on fifty-two, all that kind of good stuff. So, long story short, you know, presumption, again, and I think it deserves a little more research relative to that permit that was issued in two thousand and five, there has been some history relative to this town, and I'm not saying this board, because I've got to check the history on it, that in fact, there was permits that were granted, and I'm assuming that it was considered that, in fact, emergency access and so forth could be obtained. I don't know if anybody's taken a walk up there yet, or, I know there's been times in the past when this board has, has kind of felt that maybe a site visit would be in order. This may be one of those, not to drag everybody out to a site on a Saturday, but it's, it's, I think it tells a lot when you see it out there, because of this decision that this board has to make, and it has largely to do with that emergency access, I think it's, makes it pretty clear and evident that, in fact, I believe, I think the percentage of the road grade, I estimate around five, six percent. So, it's not, you know, it's not a ten percent road grade and so forth. So, there is the ability for emergency vehicles and fire trucks and so forth to obtain access for this home if it actually was constructed in the future, so.
We actually did, after our first time seeing this, did refer to the fire advisory board, and they didn't disagree with you, so-
Okay.
The question is, though, you really, twelve feet wide, you're going to get one car in or out at once, and so, if you're looking to now build onto the next property beyond where the road, the existing road goes-
Right.
What is the applicant offering in terms of improving that road, so you might actually be able to get two cars passing at one time?
Yeah, I think- How far is it from the intersection? Do you know that off the top of your head?
The lot itself?
Yeah.
So, you're one fifty, three hundred, another four fifty, so, I would say from the beginning of the lot here, it's about three hundred and change. I mean, you're going to go in a little bit further to make it to the house, so.
Well, and you've got to make sure, if they're backing out of the driveway, that there's an appropriate means of them to be able to turn around.
Yes. I, I, I think when I was here the last time, I had offered the fact that, you know, if there were certain improvements that need to be made in order to give the board some assurance, that they felt comfortable that, in fact, you know, cars can maintain back and forth, and so, we're certainly open to that, you know? Whether it's a small turnaround area at the top here, whether it's pull-off areas, again, it's not a real long road, just referencing back to Joseph Road, it's quite a bit longer, okay? So, we don't have that situation here where we have that particular length, but-
And the other thing that we did review was all of the denials that have been issued were actually for lots further in. So, again, this is the next lot that's going in past the existing roadway, for lack of a better word there.
I, 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 you know, there has to be something unique about this particular lot in order for this board to entertain, because I understand that what happens is, if this moves on, and thank you very much, and we graciously obtain our, our variance, well, the next guy's coming down the door.
Right.
And so, I understand that, okay? You know, again, I think this, this parcel becomes a little bit unique, again, because they're being combined. We're trying to make it more conforming. We're not where we really should be, but again, that was a function that was created prior to zoning, and we're just trying to perform as best we can, you know?
So, so, Mike, one of the things to consider is, it is undersized, but does the, for a house to get built there, because of the size of it, I would think you have a decent buildable area, that doing anything on that property isn't going to require a variance going forward?
Right. To be very clear, the only things we're looking for here, and I, I don't think we're actually looking for a variance for an undersized lot. I think the law requires that when you own budding lots, and you're in a district that's on, that's, you know, in an acreage, you have to combine them. That's required as part of the reg, so.
That's right.
Yeah. So, we're not looking for a variance relative to that. It'd be the issue of the two-eighty-A, and there are no other variances regarding front, side, or rear that we would need on this. Believe it or not, with R-thirty, it's, it's a fifty-foot fifty rear, which is the same as basically an R-one or two, but the thirty, thirty-foot on the side here, which is a little tighter.
But can the, the person who builds that house there, are they going to be back when they want to put in something in their backyard? Is there a decent enough backyard where they're going to be able to use it to?
I guess my answer is, is that I don't think that sheds and pools and so forth, from what I understand, they're not based upon the particular zone that you're in. I thought-
No, they're just the setbacks.
They're just setbacks.
That's why, so I guess what we're trying, what I'm trying to understand is really, what's the buildable area on this property?
What is that?
Well, it's, it's, at the end of the day, we're combining it, it's a one-point-seven acre parcel.
Right.
And probably the majority of the parcels that are in town, and the board reviews, are one acre, I want to say, because that's predominant zoning in town.
Probably an average of two-hundred and sixty feet deep, because two-thirty-two to three-thirty-seven.
It's, it's a sizable lot, and one of the things that, when they first approached me relative to this, for the record, after the purchase, I indicated to them that combining lot was a necessity, not only from a zoning perspective and law and so forth, but, you know, in terms of fitting the well and septic and making it all work.
Right.
It's just got to be done. So, you know, again, based upon the soil tests that are done out there, we're confident we can move forward. This is also DEP territory, so not only are we messing around with the health department, it's a, it's a, it's a DEP approval as well, for the, for the septic and so forth.
So, what do you, what improvements are you proposing to the road, to Arthur Road itself?
Well, I guess why I'm here is that probably deserves the discussion. We have a hard inventory of what's out there now, and if the board, I, again, felt if, if we went out there and actually took a look, and made determinations as to where the road is, and maybe where a turnoff could occur, or a turnaround area at the end of the road, because right now, it's basically just, the turnaround area is the driveway for the, for the-
For the last house, right.
Basically, you come in, right, and it's, I went there and go knocking on doors today, because I wanted to get a little information on maintenance agreements and so forth, just to find out what was going on with plowing, and fortunately, nobody answered the door.
And you're proposing the same thing, to just have the new road extension, literally, you're proposing it to be a driveway as opposed to even be a road. It's not even proposed to be as wide as it is already out there on Arthur Road. So, if somebody's pulling out of that driveway, there's no turnaround area there.
And I, and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Crosby, but did, we made the request for our comments from the board of fire. Did they advise as to any width that they would expect? They said they could get the trucks in? I mean, how much space do they need for a truck and the guys to get around the truck if they have an incident? I mean, the truck's a fairly wide vehicle. They got to get access to all the equipment around it. I'm sure they want six feet on either side of the truck to do that, so it seems to me twelve feet is too narrow.
Chairman, I'm sorry, did you indicate that this actually was referred to the fire advisory board?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, that's great.
Yeah, at our, at our last meeting, but when we first saw this, we specifically asked the fire advisory board to take a look at it, because if they raised concerns, we wanted to be aware of them.
A standard driveway in town is required to be twelve-foot wide. That's, I mean, required relative to width of the driveway.
But we don't want, he said there is a culvert on one side. We don't want twelve feet wide and a culvert, so they, the truck is, what, eight feet wide?
Least.
You know, and then they have to be alongside it to get the hoses and those to get off the truck.
So, on December third, two thousand and nineteen, the fire advisory board met. Arthur Road, built, the scope of the project was to build a single-family home on an unimproved road. Their recommendations, maintain the width of the current fifteen-foot driveway, not twelve feet. They seem to think there's fifteen feet.
I took a measure.
For the next one hundred feet.
Okay.
Provide and establish maintenance agreement for the road to permit year-round access for emergency equipment.
So, I guess that answers the question.
I have a handover, if you need a copy of it.
Yes, that'll be great. Do you have a copy of that? Can I take a picture of it?
You can take the picture.
Okay. Boy, leave. So, that's, that's great, because one of the things that I was going to say is, we should probably go knocking on the fire advisory board's door, they've already chimed in. I don't think, I literally went out there today with a tape, and went here to here. Now, there's shoulders, and maybe there's a little this. I measured twelve.
Well, they're saying fifteen.
You probably slid a little bit in.
There, there's your guidance. We want fifteen.
So, fifteen works. I mean, that's fine, and we'll continue that all the way through. There's also shoulders out there. I don't want to say it's like, I think with a driveway typically to town, it's twelve-foot. There's, there's shoulders on each side of this. There is a ditch on one side that constrains a little bit, but it's, it's wire, and that's kind of what I was going toward relative to a site visit.
So, they're, they're asking for it to be another hundred feet, so that should take So, that should take it past where you're proposing the driveway to go in, probably.
Right.
But again, you want it, you've got to create an area for people to back up.
Yeah, I, I don't, I know this town typically requires a circular cul-de-sac, but there's other towns that have indicated like a hammerhead.
At least a hammerhead.
Something so you can move. And I, I don't think there's any problem with that.
And then if somebody else comes in, they'll be, you know, responsible for improving it even further.
Right. And that, that makes a lot of sense.
All right, but. I'll answer questions, or?
It's my main concern, so I think I'm okay.
Yeah, I think I'm, I don't have any objections.
Here.
I just was wondering where the, the well and the septic be on this? Do we, just, it's not listed on here, if I can see.
Where's the septic?
We show, um.
Oh. The field, yeah.
Yeah, here's the, here's the tile field, and the well is actually kind of up in the front.
Okay.
It's pretty light, so maybe not be picked up, which happens.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't see, forgot it now, thank you.
My only concern was the same as the chair, in terms of variances down the road, but I think he answered that.
I think, I think we're going to be okay with that.
Yeah, we don't want to, we've gotten burned before, so, we don't want, we don't want to set ourselves up for, you know, somebody really not being able to enjoy their yard.
I get it.
Now, you mentioned the gradient basically from the road to the end is around nine or 10 feet.
I was looking, the town code maximum road grade when you design a new road is 10%. I'm imagining this is probably around 5 or 6%.
Okay, 5. And again, what about the lot gradient? What's the gradient for the lot? Is there enough buildable area in the back for a backyard and front yard?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's.
Is it pretty level, or is it kind of?
As you, as you pull into Arthur Road, and then the lots around your left, it drops off and runs down to 52. So, but it's not a cliff, it's gently, I guess gently rolling. This lot is probably best to be set up for, let's say, a basement walkout, when somebody would literally walk out their ba, that's probably the best. It's the way it's set up for. Now, whether that's going to be the house that's here, we don't, you know, we'll know, but certainly.
I mean, one of the things we have to be careful of is, we, the pictures that either you sent or that Rick showed, actually showed the Royal karting truck, and they, and they came in and they had to back up all the way. So, if we're asking them to go even further now into the road, we don't want them to be backing up even further to be able to get out of the roadway. So, that's what we really got to.
Makes all the sense.
Everybody, yep.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you can show us that you can make that happen. All right, do I have a motion for public hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will see you next month.
Great, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
So, as I had said, there is no action on item number 11, so we're up to item number 12, which is honestly just a refund, because the applicant, Peter Rudovic, at 57, Cove Branch Road, who had that carport, has actually withdrawn it, and he took down the carport like the very next day. So, I think he took the, to heart the comments from the neighbors. So, do I have a motion to refund the $70 to Mr. Rudovic?
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we are up to item number 13. Appeal 3945 Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, Wireless Edge Towers, is requesting a special permit to install a 110-foot monopole and associated ground-mounted equipment located in a 45-foot by 65-foot fence grapple surfaced compound, to be located on a 69-acre parcel at the intersection of Carpenter Road and the southwest corner of the Taconic State Parkway, pursuant to section 194-76 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert Gordioso with the Law Firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder, on behalf of the applicants.
Good. So, we probably, you probably didn't have a chance to review it unless you did.
I did, yes.
The report from our consultant that just came in this afternoon.
Sure.
Okay, so.
I mean, I, I can briefly comment on it. I'll work somewhat backwards. The notation that we require wetlands permits, we're fully aware of that, that's on the EAF, has been since day one. In fact, I believe you circulated your intent to be lead agency to the DEC. They consented to the zoning board being lead agency, and they also pointed out the fact, which we already knew, is that we believe we need an Army Corps permit, also a DEC permit, and that will also translate into a town wetlands permit. But just to be clear, that's because we're using the existing access drive.
Right.
We're making some minor improvements to it that are shown on the plans, and we're putting the utilities underground down the middle of the access drive, which is required by your code. So, that was not a surprise at all. As far as the additional information, I mean, quite frankly, I think, number one, we did provide the data on the capacity, that is in the report. I think there was some confusion by your consultant as to the maps. The maps that he said there was a lot of overlap are not meant to be the coverage maps, and we could have our engineer come to the public hearing and explain that a little bit more. But that data is all there, and in addition, there's no requirement in the code to prove the need for the 110-foot height. This 110-foot height actually meets the town code requirement. So, we, we're happy to provide a response to that from Verizon's engineer. We can put something together, but we do believe we met with the initial filing, the code requirements, and the proof of need.
Okay. Since our last, well, we had an initial look at this last month.
Sure.
Since then, we've had some internal discussion about the tower, and one of the things we want the applicant to consider is allowing the top 10 feet to be reserved for public safety, for the town and the county access on there. All right? And so, I don't know if that would then require that you then need an additional 10 feet.
So, typically, what would happen is, the, the top of the tower, and I'll have to talk to my client, obviously, and we have to make sure that there's proper separation between the Verizon antennas, which are 110 feet, and then allow municipal services to go above that. We'll certainly take a look at that and get back to you and stand your request.
Because I did have a conversation with the county. There's a lot of, well, there's an expectation that shortly that there, they may have to upgrade their public safety radio equipment.
Sure.
And so, to the extent that space can be allocated.
We understand the request.
All right, it would really just make sense. It's, it's.
Look, we understand, there's a, there's a need for this service, so.
I can answer that.
Sure, this is, Mr. John Off, the principal of Wireless Edge.
How are you?
Good evening, folks. I can tell you that the tower has been designed with an additional space for municipal and governmental antennas.
Thank you.
So, what we typically do is, above the carry level, we add a little bit of a stub, so that's why Verizon is at, I believe, 90.
106.
A 106, and the top is actually at 110. So, that extra area includes a port and a mount space for municipal antennas. So, there's no need to really go up, because the municipal antennas will be whip-style, and they'll go above that. But it's already built into the structural capacity.
Okay, thank you very much, because that's, it becomes such a burden later on for the county and the town when we've got to then.
No, we appreciate the need for emergency services in the area.
Yep, so, okay, so, I think one of your questions is whether you need to float a balloon out there. Again, because they're within the code, we, we had a previous application along the Taconic Parkway where there was, in fact, you know, a very minimalist defined gap of service, and we were kind of overruled on that, so our, based on our internal and the staff review, we kind of don't agree that there's a necessary or a requirement to do the balloon test.
And we did show the view shed maps.
Right.
And despite the arguments there, I have never noticed that pole going back and forth on the Parkway twice a day, so.
No, and we did do the view shed maps. We did show that, you know, we're about 1,000 feet from the Taconic, heavily wooded 69-acre property, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I don't, just, I mean, I drive the, I'm on the Taconic.
You're paying attention to it, yeah.
And Carpenter Road every day. So, I saw that road go in, I was wondering what was going on in there. I do have a question, just again, because of segmentation, what is the proposed use of the rest of the property?
There, there is currently no proposed use of the rest of the property.
Okay, I mean, right now, 69 acres, they could build one single house on there, because there's no subdivision. So, is the applicant, you as the applicant, but is the owner not expecting to subdivide that property in the next five years?
I mean, we don't have any knowledge that he is.
But again, you're the applicant, so you need to ask that question of the owner, because planning requires, secret requires, for segmentation purposes, we should be aware of what is planned on that property for the next five years.
So, my understanding from the owner is that the property is used for recreational purposes, and that's just his current plan.
Okay.
So, he goes out there to, you know, hunt, and, you know, go out in the woods, and that's really about it.
I'm guessing this is the property that has a, I'm not going to even call it a paper street, because it's not, but just south of the Taconic, there's actually some people just pull off, there's a little pull-off that gets them into this back of the, part of this property. So, I'm guessing that this is, that's the recreational use that they're probably using.
There is a, there is a logging.
The logging road, thank you, that's probably the best way to put it, yeah.
That's how I usually.
Okay.
There is a gate there, so people really just can't drive directly, and there's actually two driveways.
I wouldn't even try. I mean, sometimes, I, I mean, I've literally been on the Taconic and seen somebody, I'm like, where did they go? So, it's, it's pretty, okay. All right, so, so you do have comments from, you have comments from DEC already, we have...
I'm sorry, comments from DEC, yes.
Yeah, we did get comments from DEC that came in, dated February 18.
Yeah, and we had all that, the, the EAF had picked up everything that's, that's in those comments.
Right.
Including the, the BAT issue and so forth and so on.
And then, so we are going to need a written response to.
We'll submit a written response.
Okay, so, all right, anything else you need to discuss with us this evening? Otherwise, I don't think the 30 days is up yet on our lead agency.
Right, so, the only delay in declaring a lead agency is, I don't think there's been a full 30 days for certification.
I'm finding the way, I mean, the only thing I would say is that, since planning board review is not required, and since the only other involved agency would be the DEC, and since they did consent within that 30-day period, you are free to declare yourselves lead agency, but.
Is Army Corps not involved?
Well, that would be federal.
Is, what was the other, and the, and the DEC is the only other one? Okay.
Yeah, they, they said okay.
Okay, no, then I have no problem, then I take it back. Sure.
And then the only other thing we would ask is to set the public hearing.
Okay.
That, that's up to the board on that one.
Okay.
You want to send the public hearing now, or next month?
We'd, we'd really like to, we'd really like to move along with this.
We need to declare ourselves lead agency first, okay? Let's, one step at a time, because we, you know, would be hard-pressed to set a public hearing if we're not the lead agency.
So, I can't.
So, do I have a motion, having done proper notice, do I have a motion to determine this board to be the lead agency on this application?
So moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, that's now done. So, now, now, how quickly are you going to get us the information? Because once neighbors get notice of a cell tower, they are going to be flooding the planning office.
Sure.
They're going to want to see the information in the file.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the report that we submitted is, quite frankly, very detailed.
Very thorough, yeah.
And it's, and I think the responses to the consultant's comments, I think, will be, I don't want to say minimal, but will be really just an expansion of what's already been provided. So, we could probably get that done in a few weeks, if we can come back for the, you know, for next month's meeting.
What do you mean by a few weeks? Two weeks, 10 days?
Two, I mean, if we could do two weeks.
The, the notice is going to go out.
Twenty days before.
Right, so.
I mean, I think we could do two weeks from today.
So, our next meeting is March 24th, so it's literally, you know, four weeks from today.
Yeah.
So, if you, once that notice goes out with 20 days, so that's three weeks, really, that's going to go, be going out next week.
Yeah, so.
And again, it's just really.
It sounds like the max, you know.
As soon as folks get that notice, they're going to be starting to call and.
We do understand.
And want to see the file.
Okay, we'll get it in within the two weeks.
So, 10 days, by, by next Friday, the latest?
I, I promise, I have to talk to the Verizon engineer and, and just make sure.
Otherwise, we should just hold off on a public hearing for another month.
Well, we'd rather move this along, obviously.
I, I understand, and that's, but, but again, the neighbors are entitled to the information.
I get it. How about two weeks from today, and, and, and we'll make that happen, just so I have those extra couple days over that weekend.
All right, so you'll know if anybody calls to see the file that.
You blame me.
Because they're going to go next Wednesday.
But again, the RF report is in there. I mean, it is, it is in the file, and it's, really answers all the questions, quite frankly. Thank you.
Two weeks from today. All right, so.
Well, again, are we talking about 10, two weeks, or next Friday? Are we from this Friday?
They're saying two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
If the notice is going out on a Wednesday, realistically, it'll get to people's houses on a Thursday or Friday, so they'll start showing up or calling Town Hall the following Monday.
And I'll say this, everything's in the file, but if someone, if someone comes to Town Hall and they want something that we could email to them to make their lives easier, we're happy to do that. And if they want the supplemental report emailed to them, we're happy to do that as well. Take down their email address, or give them mine, it's on the cover letter, and I'll make sure to expedite that for them.
Okay.
Okay, that's reasonable. Okay, motion to erudite?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you for your time tonight. The only other thing I would say is that the code does have a specific provision also to notify, obviously, the county and adjoining municipalities, so I just want to make sure that's taken care of as well.
Do we do a referral on this one?
Thank you.
It's along the Taconic State Parkway and Carpenter Road. Hey, they commented on, okay. Didn't they comment on this, Eric? No, they didn't, that was another simple letter I wrote today.
I hate these things, they're so damn big.
All right. Let me just get this. Okay, so, item number 14. Appeal 3946 Fort Shaw, Patricia and Joseph Fort Shaw, 32 Louise Lane, Hopeful Junction, are requesting a variance to allow an 8-foot by 12-foot shed to remain in front of the house, and a 2-foot height variance for approximately 38 feet of existing 6-foot fence, as the property has frontage on three roads pursuant to section 194-107B, 3 of the zoning ordinance. Aye. So, we are now to the part of the agenda where these are applications this board has never reviewed before, so those of you who are left, it's likely the first time we're seeing your applications, so we're going to ask a lot of questions now, so that when we set you up for a public hearing, we at least know when, you know, what's, what you're doing. So, if you don't mind taking us through your application with, why is, when was the, when did the shed go up? Did you put the shed up? Was it there when you bought the property? And why are you asking for it to remain where it is?
Because we have the, we're on three streets, so.
Start with the first question. Did you put this, when did the shed go up?
Probably the year 2000.
Okay, did you put the shed up yourself?
I did, I built the shed.
Okay, all right, and, so, what's it being used for, or why do, why are you wishing for it to remain? Why is it where it is?
It's, well, we really can't put it behind the house. There's a pool that takes up the whole backyard. Our, our backyard, really, we don't have much of a backyard, especially with the pool there. And the property frontage, I think, is like 326 feet, and on one side, it's 120, the other side is 110. So, we don't have much room behind the house to comply with anything.
Okay.
And there is a swimming, any ground swimming pool there that occupies, I would say, 70%, 80% of the usable backyard space.
When our building inspector was out there, he said there was a, he has pictures of an RV in the yard, is that gone?
No, the RV has been moved back now, but it will be gone. We're not going to keep this there.
Okay.
We're not going to sell on the house anymore.
And the other issue that was raised, that was not part of your application, is there is a 6-foot fence under your deck.
It's under the, it's under the deck, yes.
But it's still in front of the house, because you have those three sides, those three front yards.
That's correct.
So, if folks would like to, our board members would like to see pictures of it.
We, we have a picture here.
So, we just have to address it.
Okay.
While we're, again, with, the idea is, let's just make sure we're, you know, good with everything that's on there.
She amended her application to include the fence.
To include the fence, okay, good. That's why it's the 2 feet. Got it. Okay, so comments or questions from board members?
I see a snowplow or something in the front.
Yeah.
That's going to stay there, or is it?
No, that's for sale.
Okay, that'll be more, okay. And this 6-foot fence that you have?
I have a picture here.
Okay, I have a picture, we have the picture of it.
You have the same.
Are you using space behind it for storage or anything, or?
Well, the lawn, I put the lawnmower there. I have a riding lawnmower, so that goes under there, just to keep it out of sight.
Okay, so because you've got a lot of space up there.
Yeah.
And so, I was wondering, is it like a?
Question, so I see the shed, and then I see the white fence, is that where the pool is?
No, the pool is behind, right, right adjacent those pine trees, if you see it.
So it's behind the house?
It's directly behind the house, yeah.
Yeah.
The white fence is under the deck. That's the six-foot fence.
And you notice there was slope, the ground is sloped by the pool. I guess they built it up when they originally put the pool in. So that, I put the shed there, because that was the flattest part at the time.
So the shed is, it's in the backyard, but it's not in the backyard because it's the frontage?
Right. I have no problem. Any comments or concerns?
And then you also have this other small fence. What is that for?
That was a garden.
Oh, garden, okay. I'm just making sure, okay. Motion to advertise?
Second.
A question or a motion?
Motion to advertise.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you see Pam Relfe, she'll give you your information about putting up a sign, and then we'll see you next month. Oh, yeah, you've got three front yards. Sorry, you need three signs. All right?
I gotta put up three signs.
The joy is of having a corner lot. What? Pam, will you give your instructions, and then you get the signs from her at a later date? All right, item number 15. Appeal 3747 Duffy. Lauren Duffy, 25, Biken Hill Wright Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 357 square foot variance in order to build a 1,230 square foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. The square footage of the footprint of the existing dwelling is 1,456. Aye. So again, the first, first time we're seeing this. So where are you proposing on your property to build a house? Build a garage?
I did actually bring a diagram, if you'd like to see it.
Do you have a survey or something?
I do have, I keep surveying with it, but I also have, these are probably, this is like the existing parcel of the property.
Right.
And this is like where it would be back here.
Okay, so it's...
Correct, like right there, that's where I was saying.
Yeah, so why so far back?
Um, because when you go down the bottom, or a driveway that goes into the backyard, that would give access to where our septic fields are and our tanks are, in case we ever have to.
We had an issue, yeah.
That would be our only access to the backyard.
Okay, you probably can't build it where you're proposing, because you have floodplain in your backyard. So the floodplain comes in 115 feet from your rear property line. And it's very wet. Anybody who drives along the Deconic Parkway can see all the water that's back there.
Yeah, but we're, we're up off that plain, I'm gonna say.
You're a little bit higher than the, than the property than the, the storehouse next door, okay, I know that.
Yep.
All right, but you're the property right just north of that one.
Yep.
So you can actually see your, into your backyard from the Deconic Parkway.
Yes, you can.
Okay?
Right, yeah.
And so, yeah, I do recognize that, but even the pictures that, you know, we were provided with a picture from February 7th, and there's a ton of water in your front yard. So there's no...
That's at, that's at the bottom of our driveway.
That's the bottom of our driveway.
I understand, but there's a lot of water in this area. So that's why I'm questioning, why would you wanna put a garage all the way so far back and put it in a floodplain?
Well, there's really no else to really put it, because if we come down to the bottom of our driveway, it blocks complete access to the back of our property.
And then the middle of the yard has our fields.
And the middle of our yard, to the left, is where our septic is. So we could actually go straight back from the bottom of our driveway, go straight back along our property line, and that's where the garage would be.
And so are you proposing to bring a driveway all the way back to it?
Well, this is gonna be just storage back there. This is gonna be, I have a couple vintage motorcycles that are gonna be actually kept in this garage.
Okay, you've got a couple of other things in your backyard as well. There's, looks like a shipping crate back there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, why?
That's, I have all the storage right now, so that was a temporary solution for what I have. Oh, I have that and two trailers back there. I want, I'm gonna get rid of the potato.
The shipping crate is awfully close to your, to your property line. It may even be over. It may be on your neighbor's property.
No, it's definitely, it's definitely on our property.
Okay, I'm just going by what we, what we got from parcel access.
Okay.
Okay, from what we got from parcel access, it appears, unless there's another shed there.
No.
Then it appears that it's on the property line. But again, a structure should be 25 feet in, so where are you?
Yeah, so...
Where is the shipping?
Well, it was a temporary solution to my problem, so it's, it's definitely on my property, but not the 25 feet offset. It is, it's on my property, but it's not 25 feet away from the property line.
Where is your septic?
It's...
The tank is...
The tank is actually...
The tank, where's the field?
The field's right in the middle of the back of the property.
It's, can I show you on the survey?
Sure.
Is it right where you wrote 30 by 41 by 14?
Basically, right there, yes.
Well, if you look right here, my tank is here. I have a pool here now, and my septic field's right here, right in this area, right after my pool.
Okay, so what, again, you've got a floodplain that goes 115 feet in, why can't you bring this forward?
I could, I could, I could pull, I could pull the garage towards the house more.
Right. It would be less to, less of a problem for access getting back there, and it, it's gonna, you know, like I said, you don't wanna be dealing with a floodplain. That, this whole area is wet.
No, I understand. I've been there, I've been staying for about eight years now, and from the Deconic up to my backyard is probably eight feet high. So I don't think I'm ever gonna have a problem, but, you know, we never know either.
There are some times when that northbound Deconic is...
Yeah.
Surrounded by water.
Okay.
Especially in that...
I mean, I could pull the garage towards the house more, that I could, I could do that.
You, you really, for your own, you really wanna keep it out of the floodplain, okay?
Okay.
And your floodplain, by the way, extends more into your property than it does at the house next door.
Can I just take a peek at that real quick?
Yeah, sure. All right, so, so this is your lot. You see, it comes more into your property than it does the house next door.
So actually, on this print, my garage would be like right here.
Then it's not 76 feet in.
I'll show you.
You're, you're telling us 76 feet in, I'm going by parcel access and what the...
Well, yeah, 'cause the garage, my mistake. That's my mistake, yeah, because I'm figuring the garage too. So to the back of the garage, it would be 76 feet. So I, I could, I could pull it forward, but it's not a problem at all.
Okay, so...
Because you have other considerations. You put it in a floodplain, and something happens, you may not have insurance coverage or anything on it. Or your insurance may come up if you put stuff in a floodplain.
Right. That's why I'm saying you wanna stay out of that floodplain.
Yeah, so, okay.
What was the footage you said again was the floodplain?
115.
115 feet in.
I just wanna write it down, that's what I remember.
Pam, do we have to cut this in the file?
Yeah, you can just maybe get a cup of coffee, so you'd have a...
Well, I'm, I can give it to them if you can just, another one in the file, all right, so you can have that for your file.
Thank you.
All right, you should just be aware of that your, I know you wanna compare yourselves to the property next door, but the floodplain comes in more, which I know you think it's a higher elevation, but obviously...
Yeah, I understand.
There's still a difference there, if it extends into your property more than it does for the house next door.
Okay.
Okay, so just something to be aware of. And there is no question, there's a lot of water in that area, okay?
Yep.
That's, you know, the Deconic is sometimes, you know. All right. So we've, so we've established that you're going to, the rear of the garage is going to be at least 115 feet in.
Yes, at the rear of my garage, yep.
That's about where you have that container, right? You said?
They need a coordinated review on this one, because it's along the Deconic.
Give or take, yeah.
Well, that's still needed, I, I get that, which is there, so you're gonna need an engineer to do this. Okay, but they need a coordinated review, Michael, because it's along the Deconic?
Tell the DOTM, they'll, they'll probably want jurisdictions. They're gonna need to fill out EAF. I don't see one in here.
I'm sorry, what is that for?
It's, it's called a short form environmental assessment form.
Oh, I'm not aware of that.
Right, you can get it, you can get it online.
And you have two expired permits.
It was a short form, can you repeat that?
Environmental assessment form?
I have one.
It's also called EAF.
On there for, for a shed.
Okay.
That we never built, so I'm probably just gonna do away with that.
You have a pool deck?
Yep, I have, I have one upper deck that was closed out. I have a lower deck that was open. The deck is finished. I can't have them come by, take a look at that, so I can close that, close out with two.
Okay, and then you do have a shed permit?
I have a shed permit on there now that we never continued to build, that I never even started it, so we could probably just do away with that one.
Yeah, we could do away with that. We have no intent of building that anywhere in the...
Okay, that, that's fine. It's going back to, it was last renewed in 2016, so it's already at least four or five years old.
We did nothing with it, right?
Yeah, we did nothing with that.
Okay. Okay, all right. You're gonna need a little bit of guidance here, though, because the floodplain development permit's gonna need, you're probably gonna need an engineer to take a look at this.
Okay, structural engineer for me, for, for the garage or for the property?
Civil engineer who can help you with the floodplain development permit to be able and, and just make sure that you've got all your ducts in a row as it relates to, you know, where to put this.
Well, I do have a question for you, then, 'cause my next-door neighbor has two garages that are way back.
Way back? I, I don't know that. You can see them from the Deconic.
Yeah, that you can. And I was just curious.
But, but again, he's been in, he's been in, and we reviewed that. He has site approval on his property there. So we went through all of those structures on that property.
All right.
All right, that's a historic house. It has a little bit more leeway than...
No, I completely understand. I'm just, I'm just...
All those structures and their use was reviewed, so...
No, I completely understand.
They were elevated as well, I believe.
Yeah, they're, those are raised up. They are definitely raised up, the two structures in the back, yes. So...
And your survey was done in 2013, so I would suggest contacting this surveyor and working with him, 'cause he might help you out, or he might know somebody.
The engineer may need an updated survey to be able to help with.
Well, that's what I would go do. The next thing is, because when you come back, we need to know where you, where the back of the shed is going to be, or the structure. Because right now, I just, you know, penciled in, and so we can say, okay, so, so the person who did the survey can help you put the setbacks onto the, the setbacks onto the survey along with everything else. And then they might be working with some person who can help with the rest of the stuff.
Okay, so we've talked about the location of the garage. Now we actually need to talk about the size of the garage.
Okay.
1,230 square feet of a garage is really pretty huge. So do we, how many bays are you talking about?
Three bays.
And I, and I get it. Based on what I see, you've got a trailer, you've got a storage container already that you're saying has equipment that you need to be able to put somewhere.
This is what it would...
So it's a three-bay garage?
Correct.
That goes, gonna go across the property pretty significantly, much more than that little box that you've, than you've drawn.
Well, yeah.
So I think we, again, we're need you to, I think we need you to deal with an engineer to be able to give us a real...
It's almost as big as your house, yeah.
Good.
It is almost as big as our house. We see the, where the footprint of our house is...
Forty feet long, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, 40 by 30.
Fifty-six, yeah, the front of your house is 56 feet, and this is almost, almost 40, 40 feet.
Yeah, your house is...
Forty-one feet, okay.
The house is 26'5" by 56'3".
Fifty-six, so...
So it's a little bit wider and 15 feet shorter, so, yeah.
So I'd like to see it on the survey.
I think we'll be, again, what maybe more helpful to them is for them to work with an engineer to get in on the plan and show the use of the property.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Again, they've gotta deal with the floodplain development permit, so they are, you're gonna need somebody's help to do that.
And I think too, the engineer need to look at the size of the garage, 'cause it says detached garages in the code. They can't exceed 750 square feet or 60% of the square footage of the footprint of the principal structure. So an engineer can help you with that, about how big the detached garage can actually be, 'cause there's a requirement in the code about that.
Yeah, the, the plan that you, the building that you've shown us, where is that coming from? Who's saying that that's the size that you need, or that's, you're just thinking, you want a three-bay garage?
Carolina Carports, that, that's where we, where we would think about getting it from.
Okay.
I can't get the paperwork from them until I give them the deposit of the, the wind code on it and everything. So I didn't give the deposit yet, 'cause I wanted to go through the variance first to see where I'm at with that.
Is it coming as a kid? Is it coming as a, like a, like a, delivered on a trailer and they're just gonna put it together?
It's delivered on a trailer, and then, I'm gonna have a slab, and it's gonna come on a trailer, and then they install, they install it and put, put the whole thing together.
Is it wood frame or metal?
Metal.
But, but like a typical two-car garage is gonna be 24 by 24, okay? You're asking for 40 feet wide. You're only adding one more bay. You only need another 24 feet, so...
It's gonna be...
I'm sorry, another 12 feet, so I'm at 36.
It's gonna be 40 by 30 deep.
Yeah.
Why 30 feet deep?
Well, in the back, in the back of it, 'cause I have three collector cars that I wanna put in this garage for storage.
So you're actually looking to store cars too deep in there?
No. I wanna build shelves in the back of them, just for our seasonal wear, you know, Christmas, all our Christmas stuff.
What are you looking to put in there? You got three cars plus?
A trailer.
No, a trailer, no, a trailer's not gonna...
Trailer's in the backyard, though.
Just buy three cars. I have two vintage bikes, and I wanna put shelving behind the cars, just for storage, for like our Christmas, our seasonal stuff.
'Cause we have no attic on the house.
Locksliders, lawnmowers, and everything else, 'cause the...
Even I don't have a basement, either.
So in the, we have two, we have two cars.
Two-story, that's like both livable space, yeah.
Because again, what council's saying is technically under the code, you're only allowed 750 square feet.
Right.
So you're asking for over 1,200 square feet. That's why we're asking these questions. You have to justify, so the fact that you're putting shelves for storage, I don't know how much storage you have, but that's not, that's why I'm asking.
We have no attic.
I understand that.
You have an existing garage with your house?
It does. It has a small two-bay that basically...
Has a boiler on one side, an oil tank partially on the side.
And she wants to put her car.
So you really can't like park a car down?
Of course, she should park her car.
Before you do.
I have no problem with that.
Especially in the winter.
But, so, yeah, we're looking for more, just for storage, you know, the kids with their bikes and the dirt bikes and stuff, just for storage.
Let's be and suggest that you might...
I didn't hear of dirt bikes.
But he goes a trap.
Okay, good.
He goes a trap.
Good.
Well, you need to do, I guess, some sort of layout for what you want in there and why you need so much space, because again, you have to justify going over 750 square feet. So keep that in mind.
Parking space is 20 feet deep, or, you know, 24, as I said, would be a typical garage that leaves you room in the front. You're asking for another six feet on top of that. How are you gonna use that space? It's a lot of space. Your neighbors really have the ability to object to this, and so you wanna be able to show that, you know, demonstrate that there really is a need for this. And I, I get, you don't have an attic, if you don't have a basement, typical places where many homeowners can store, you don't have that advantage, okay? So that could, that's definitely part of the argument. It supports why, you know, we should be able to be helped, to help you out here, but your neighbors are entitled just to, you know, justify why you need such a huge structure in your backyard.
I understand.
Okay?
And you said you currently have a two-car garage?
Yes.
And so half of it is with the oil burner and...
The oil tank and end of that well, yeah.
So all the stuff that's typically in the basement is in the garage.
That's right.
Correct.
So essentially, you have one, one-car garage.
Basically, basically, yeah.
So kind of limits your storage space.
And I'm losing storage on two of my cars, within the next eight months, and that's the reason why we kinda threw the town instead of to see if we can get this built, because I would know that we're losing the storage on my other two cars, so I just wanted to keep them all in one area and...
Okay, so, so we need to have you, you really, really, I'm strongly advising you to find an engineer, work with an engineer on this, because we don't have enough information for us to proceed to a public hearing. We need you to resolve the environmental issues. Where are you gonna put this? Show us how it's gonna work in the floodplain, and you need the environmental assessment form, okay?
Okay, so we can get that on...
Where do we find the environmental assessment form? Is that on?
It's on DC's website, but if you Google environmental, short form environmental assessment form, it'll populate.
All right. So we're gonna need to see you again when you're ready.
If you weren't an engineer, you'll probably just take care of that for you.
Right, exactly.
And get a floodplain development from like an engineer.
Floodplain development, permit you get from the town, but somebody's gotta actually do the analysis for you to apply for it, okay?
Yeah, an engineer will put that on a map and everything and the size, so working with a professional, you don't have to worry about all these issues, but let the professional run with it for you.
It's not, it's not a lot of work, but it is a couple of forms that we have to make sure you get.
No. I haven't had, no, the, the, any ship containers there, and I haven't had any problems with it at all.
Imagine if you did, it'd be sinking at this point.
Yeah, I mean, uh...
No, it's gonna be pretty dry winter, though, we haven't...
So when we take care of all this, do we resubmit it to you and wait for the next hearing? How does this work?
Yes, you're gonna resubmit it to the clerk, and then you'll come back in, not for a public hearing yet, we haven't set you for a public hearing. We need to take a look at the information that you're then providing, and make sure that we're good to go, clear with your neighbors. You know, it's just to the, clear that if your neighbors wanna come in and look at the file.
Okay.
All right?
So what I would suggest is let the office know if you have retained a professional and when that professional will have everything.
Right.
So it may not be in March, it may go into April. So just let us know, so that we know that on the, on the March agenda, that either you're gonna bring everything in, or it's gonna go into April. And the professionals, I mean, the office will guide you with that.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number 16. Appeal 3748 De Silva, Lynn's De Silva, 115 Old State Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of his house pursuant to Section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The existing dwelling is located in a B1 zone. Are you Mr. De Silva? Okay, so again, first time we're seeing your application. Who, how long has the fence been there?
I bought the house six years ago, and...
So you didn't put the fence up?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's helpful. So let's understand. There's a 40-foot by 50-foot garage with a permit. Should be for storage only. So you have a garage, you have a large garage on your property?
Yes.
And it's for storage only?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a wood stove?
Uh, yes, I do.
Do you have a permit for that wood stove?
Uh, I applied for now. Max was out last week.
Okay, good, no problem. There's equipment on this property? There's an excavator or an...
Oh, yes, I do have my machine over there. End, end of the year, I did some landscape my house, and then I still have to finish the landscape.
Okay, all right. You're not running a business out of here, are you?
No.
Okay, just making sure, um...
It is B one.
It is a business, so, yeah, it is an area that would allow you to run a business out of it. There's a picture if anybody wants to see.
Yeah, which, which Old State Road section is this?
Right by the smokehouse.
Right near...
Right behind the smokehouse, almost.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that end.
Near plated.
Yep, right behind it.
All right, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good. Motion to advertise?
Do you have any idea how old that fence is? It, it looks a little faded, but it looks like it's in decent condition, so...
Well, this is right by...
And it's so far back that...
This is the property right next to John's Hickman's. So that, yeah, this was the one where that was originally a, we have the, the, one stone, uh, wood structure there. It was a barn, looks like a barn, small barn. That was horse, and then there was a smaller fence there that was there to corral the horse. And before the wall went up for the six-foot fence, the new guy who bought it put up that big fence, much to Mr. Hickman's chagrin.
Oh, okay.
I remember talking about that, 'cause I live a little bit further up, and I used to walk by that to get to the East Fish Cup provisions there. We'd go down there for breakfast sandwiches on Sunday morning. Yeah, so that's what I thought, and there's the structure with the barn. This is the one that, when the guy passed away, the structure was filled with cats.
Okay.
He was, he was running a cat.
Hi, I, I think we have enough information.
He was running a cat rescue business in there, and that's why he put up the fence, so you couldn't get to the building. Yeah, that's the history of it.
Motion to advertise.
Thank you.
More information.
I have a motion, and...
Second. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
All right, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, okay, and then we'll see you next month for the public hearing.
That, that, that property prompted the note.
Okay, all right.
You made an impression on J M S.
All right, item number seventeen, I, Appeal three nine four nine Mastronardi. Casey Mastronardi is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, point three seven nine acres in an R one zone, a twenty-five-foot variance to the required dot lot depth. Lot is a hundred and twenty-five feet, and the code requires one fifty. And a twenty-one-foot frontline variance pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations for, and section one ninety-four dash one thirty-one of the zoning ordinance. The lot is located at four First Street, Hopple Junction, and is in the ownership of Davis.
We're gonna rescind the application. I talked to the applicant. They're gonna come back with some more design ideas. They want to reconfigure the house.
Okay.
So I didn't wanna waste the board's time.
No problem. Just for the board's information, we did approve a couple variances on the lot immediately adjacent to this. First Street is behind Frankie's, okay, so we have done some, allowed some, because they do have water and sewer over there, and so there's, you know, lot, there's a lot less that has to happen on a lot over there.
Right.
Okay, so...
We'll turn around some different configurations with the house.
Okay, so we're gonna leave it active and, but just not, you're not ready tonight?
Not ready tonight.
Good, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You sat here all night for that, you could've just emailed us.
I missed you guys, you know?
We appreciate that. Have a great night.
Have a good night. And last but not least, item number eighteen, Appeal three nine five zero Blige. Nicola Village is requesting permission to proceed with construction upgrades to the property he owns at twenty-five fifty Route fifty-two, Hopple Junction, Goodfellas Restaurant, pursuant to local law number nine of two thousand and nineteen, which enacted a moratorium along Route fifty-two to the, from the Deconic State Parkway to the Blue Hill Road. The moratorium is in effect from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, until June twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Michael, are you changing the outside, the footprint, the site plan? Are you, you're just doing improvements to the building itself?
Yes.
You are changing the...
No.
I was gonna say, what question, what question are you answering?
So, um...
All right, go ahead, take us...
There is no expansion, there is no modifications to the footprint being proposed, there's no additions being proposed.
Okay.
The only reason...
You're not bringing the building closer to Route fifty-two, you know?
The only reason I answer kind of squirrely like that is because I actually spoke to Max Dale today. After we get, um, through the, the Z B A, whatever happens, some, I have to sit down with him because there's a little bit of a disparity between what the owner thinks was done in the back and what Max was, thinks was there before, and I just, this is all subject to going through whatever motions we have to go through after this.